Welcome to the March twenty second meeting of the Rochester School Board. I'm Neil Turner, and at this point in time, we will do a call to order. We have Grant. And Juana.
I'm here.
Thank you. Thomas?
I'm here.
All right, and Michael has been excused from the meeting tonight. At this point in time, we'll do the flag salute. Flag salute agents. I guess I got that out of sync. I just did roll call before the flag salute. Apologies. I'm still new at this. I'm gonna get this figured out. Actually, at this point in time, do we have anybody who'd like to make a public comments? That for items that are on the agenda tonight?
Neil, I have some that chat phone too, and so far I don't have anybody.
Okay, so should we wait thirty seconds?
Yeah, let's give it just, okay.
Sure, we have an opportunity. All right. At this point in time, we have our consent agenda. This is from our previous meetings. And I will like take a motion in a second to approve consent agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Thomas. All right, is there any discussion? With that, I'll take them all in favor of approving our consent agenda. Say hi.
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 All right, get down and out of the way. And now we're on to reports. And at this point in time, we have music in our schools month.
And. Yes, so you bet. So March is music in our schools month, and actually April is arts in our school month. So kind of a good celebration here for both, but tonight we have a quartet from the high school that is going to be playing and Kelsey Coles. What? Kuzin. Thank you, sorry. Kelsey Kuzin is going to introduce the kids that are gonna be playing to you tonight, playing for you tonight and tell you just a little bit about what they're doing. I understand they're on their way to compete at state, so. And so this quartet is, I believe this is Boons and Bones?
Yeah.
Okay, they entered in twice and they just switched the first letter, so I don't remember which one it is. It's that one. But this is Daniel Dugah on trombone, Jaden White on trombone, Grace Weddle on trumpet, and Aurora McLean on trumpet. They will be performing. How do you pronounce that again? They got mad at you. Orador song, and we're excited to play for you guys. I already gave our lovely superintendent a adjudication form. Because even though she no longer wears the hat, she is still a music professional, and I value her opinion very much. So without further ado, goons and bones.
Get comfortable, check as much room as you all need.
Nice save.
Wow.
If you guys angle for this. Oh yeah, that's a good one. This is like changing.
Yeah, yeah.
What are we doing here? Why are we angle? I don't know. I think it's playing into my train of thought at this point. Okay. Did you go?
You guys, what a wonderful sound. Seriously, very nice sound. You're blending really well. I heard some dynamics. Yeah, good job, good job.
U G S. You. Yes. She introduced you two factors.
J A Y. E E. Masses white.
Okay.
Of course, a little D D L E.
And.
Aurora McLean. A U R O N. M C T C. I think yes.
So you head to Central in April, probably second or third weekend. All right, well, we wish you the best of luck. I would love to come and work with you one of these days coming up. And just give you some more pointers if you don't mind.
That would be awesome.
All right, okay. Nice job. Let's give him another hand. Really very good, you guys. And thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll get her stool.
Oh, okay.
I don't have the, my million hands.
I'm used to hearing the band in auditorium. I'm not used to having them in a small. It's like, I was like, I'm really.
All right there, yeah. Thank you, thank you very much. What's that?
The whole band would have crowded this out.
Yes, they would have. Not quite enough room for the whole band, but what a treat to have them to celebrate music in our schools month.
Okay, so now we are, where are we at? We are. Oh, down here. Yes, we are now on student reports.
All right, well, I had this whole feat about how good the band was, but you guys already saw that. But there is day they had a concert. They all did great. They had the choir there. It was just fantastic, but that's the end of that. When the ball is great, they had a good DJ, just a great time for music. We had some winners in our school. What? E S D one one three spring art show people's choice award contest, and the winners were Arwin Schoolcraft, Danica Ledraff, and Kira Smith. They were great, and that's why they won. The spring plays coming up. It's about Goldilocks, but the director, a student, what Kindra Gomez Gomez? She's doing a great job in adding a new twist to it, but I'll talk about that when that's done. And that's all I really had for this meeting. Yeah, I mean, the sports. What? This is the announcements. Congrats for our boys track team as they beat Black Hills yesterday. Several Warriors captured first place in their events led by Kalen Black taking four first place wins. Connor Morgan with three first place wins, and Kai Uvius with two first place finishes. Way to go Warriors. That's why we're the best. I added that little last bit. True, but yeah.
And you're headed into the last quarter of the year, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think we measure it in semesters mainly, but.
Corea, April tenth is our fourth quarter.
Exactly.
Yeah, awesome. So what events did, was the boys track team?
Yeah, the boys track team. Yeah, they beat Black Hills yesterday.
Awesome. The ones that finished first place four times, what events were the, you know?
With Kalen Black just took four first place wins. I don't know what Connor Morgan got three first place wins and Kai Uvius with two first place finishes. I don't know what the difference is. I don't know track. Okay, it's all the same, just different words.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Of course, it's a pleasure to be here. All right.
She can be here today too. Awesome. And with that, we're on to principal reports.
The first up for principals report today, we have.
We're gonna go with us to primary. Every now and then I think we're gonna shake it up and do it reverse age order. I'm looking at one of the books that she's holding, so the part that references one of the books she's holding, I'm going to gloss over.
That's a presentation.
Sing a song, make it simple. Okay. So things have been going on around the primary school. If you could go back, yes. So over the course of the last year, year and a half, we've been focusing a lot on the science of reading and universally designed learning, U D L, and structured literacy, and our coaching and our P L C, all that's really working in concert. And we're really starting to see some huge payoffs in the world of reading. So this next slide. Then is. So I know you've seen this before. Maggie has introduced you guys to this, and other conversations and presentations around the science of reading. This one part of it is Scraper's reading rope, and the top portion is really all about the foundational reading skills. It's that sounding it out part, and the bottom portion has to do more around the thinking and talking about ideas. When you put the word recognition part, which we devote a god of time at the primary school on, and we spend with the vocabulary, the background knowledge, language structures, literacy knowledge, verbal reasoning, our students respond to a lot of those pieces from the read alouds we do with them and the experiences they have. They can still begin to understand how to comprehend and how things are related, even before they can read it themselves. Second grade is the tipping point, and really happens in third grade, where we move from learning how to read to reading to learn. So we put these two pieces of the rope together, and voila, you've got skilled readers. Our Joey Easley, that our reading interventionist that works in the K five world, has provided just at the primary school alone, more than twelve hours of P D over the course of this school year. He's provided more P D in previous years, but really hit it hard. It was something that we've devoted most of our Friday training days, because we have P L C days and we have training days. And we've also devoted nearly all of our try time that our P S has for this. And I want, and in the end of this, I'm gonna thank you guys again for devoting the resources of the school district in a variety of ways. We've sent, you know, Joey to be trained to become a specialist, and she has already had a huge background in experience in reading, but we've sent her for more. And rather than sending everybody out, we're sending her, and she's coming back and training us up. And there's another piece I'll get to about the relationship way that is key. Excellent, please. Universal Designs for Learning, U D L, I imagine Melissa Lee has spent a lot of time working with, explaining presentations with y'all, and for the primaries, we're focusing on that first row, which is about access. How to get kids to be able to engage with the stuff, the learning. Friday, as an example, Diane Fast, who is our instructional coach, really dove deeply into the access point and the first part around engagement with our teaching staff at the primary school. We need to get kids who can connect with the lessons that they are being presented with. More importantly, we need to provide lessons in a way that kids can connect with them, whether that be access and the way it's shown to you. For example, if I want you to know about Bernoulli's Principle of Why Airplanes Fly, I can have you read something about it. I could have you watch a video about it. I could have you guys go do some experiments about it. In the end, I want you to understand why planes don't drop out of the earth and why drop off into the earth anyway, and why wings are curved. Doesn't matter which way you learn about it. If we only focus on presenting things one way, then we're saying that one way is the skill we're teaching, not the content. So we'll be spending time learning, learning it. You know, next part, please, sir. And this is about structured literacy. I know Maggie's talked to you about it. It's come up in multiple venues. Why we can't stay with the way we've done things with our reading. And the parts that I have bolded, this is O S P I's definition. Structure Literacy is a teaching approach informed by knowledge of oral and written language and how it is learned. It is direct. With direct instruction is explicit. We're telling you what the rule is. We're not helping you can figure it out. It is systematic, there's sequential cumulative, multi-sensory, diagnostic and responsive. The parts that I have bolded are because that is what we've been working on with our science of reading training and with our U D L training at the primary school. And the goal is that you're gonna have kids said that it's systematic and it's gonna become automatic with the kiddos. So then it takes us to our instructional coaching. So Diane Fast is the instructional coach at the primary school. I have given an example. This is not her schedule because it includes some information that I would not want the public necessarily to see, because it's about working with specific teachers and specific kids. So I just gave a pretty one that's somebody else's work, but that is how busy her schedule is legitimately. So she's our instructional coach. She works with new teachers, mid-career teachers, our well-seasoned teachers. Everyone, she picks them up where they're at and takes them where they want to go, which is ultimately where we as a district are going with reading. She plans with the teacher. Some teachers don't need her to teach alongside, and they just want help with the planning, someone to be a sounding board with them, other people. She'll do some co-teaching, or she'll model teaching, and it's not a one and done. It is four to six weeks commitment. And then she provides also whole group P D, and she works with reading and math and S C L and classroom management, because some things are all really one way. And then she moves our knowledge. We've been learning things, and now she's showing us that, yes, we can apply them. And the most significant thing is she works independent from me in that I know what she's doing. We talk about where we're going as a building, but a teacher can go to her and say, I'm not really good at this yet. And it doesn't come back to me as an evaluative conversation. So they can be totally trusting in her work. The next one. So this is how all of these things look. This happens to be just a snippet of the front of the beginning of a video that one of our first grade teachers sent out for the rest of her grade level. Student A, who happens to be standing, is reading the sentence that which is on this kid's headband. It's just, what do you call those things? Clothes pins to the top of his headband. Student B writes what was dictated to him or her. Student A is checking and coaches with the rules. You will hear the children say the rules they used to teach us in teacher school. They were like secrets, we couldn't let the rest of you know. The children actually know the rules. And student A is checking the work because she can see it right there on the headband. And if the child makes a mistake or needs a correction, she's been taught how to coach her classmate. And then praises specifically when the kid does it right. So when we're looking at the whole picture of like U D L, this kid has accessed it. It is a safe environment. I'm not getting corrected in front of my entire class. One other person who I'm gonna be coaching later and something else is working with me. I, this is an example of the structured literacy, explicit instruction about the rules, and it's reinforced. The other part about structured literacy and about this whole science of reading, but more specifically a structured literacy, is it is the passive and the working part. It is expressive and receptive. Reading and writing are opposites of one another. The kid is hearing and knowing the rule for how to sound something out, bada bing bada boom. You know the rule for writing that bad boy now. So this little picture shows all of the things we've been working on. And so I so appreciate and applaud the resources that you guys were spending to let us have P L Cs every Friday. That we have the resources to after school within the teacher's contracted compensation. Have these extra P Ds that we have instructional coaches who, this is Diane's tenth year. Every year I thought she was amazing. I don't know what amazing times ten is, because she keeps growing in her skill set. We have an interventionist who this is her jam. So we have layer upon layer upon layer, and we've got kids that are readers. I have kids get sent to my office. I never know why they're showing up, because if they're, uh-oh, I get a call to get them. So a kid will show up, or they'll see Danny, and they're like, I'm supposed to read this to you, because their teacher is excited that they can read. Or their reading intervention instructor is excited they can read. I get listen words read to me. I get books read to me. I get, I don't know what it is read to me, and we, and it's exciting. Kids are identifying as readers. So that's what we're excited about in March at the primary school.
Thank you very much.
Questions, thoughts?
Juana, Thomas, any questions?
None here. Nice.
All right.
Thank you.
Oh, what was that, Thomas? No question, okay.
I like the way you stare up there.
I stared at the little box.
So I'm gonna share a little bit about some peer professional development. We're pretty excited about it, J M S. So we've had a couple book studies going on simultaneously. This book, Thinking Classrooms, Carrie Black has been leading with eleven teachers from my building, but there's teachers from other building as well. And those teachers have spent over sixteen hours on work outside of the reading and the book study, taking the knowledge they learn in here and putting into practice in the classroom. So you can see the different intertwined strands, math proficiency that they're working on, and they're using these skills to help accomplish that. And then this is similar to what Mrs. Roney shared. We have another book study that's around structured literacy interventions. And while they've been doing the science of reading at their building, our building says we want some of that, because our kids need that too. So we dedicated about three and a half hours this spring with more planned for next year, again, to focus on this science of reading. And so the peer professional development came from really around this thinking classrooms. On our last try day, we had Shannon Bond and Janelle Kidrick did a math lesson using skills that they've learned from this book study and their P D. And then the other three teachers took these same skills, but applied it across to E L A, to write reading and writing. And so they were using those same skills, but in a different way, to show that these skills, although this is all about math, can be applied across curriculum to get kids actively engaged. And then Amanda, our instructional coach, did a training that showed the crossover between those two different things. And so this is just kind of how they rotated in groups. So they went from classroom to classroom to classroom throughout that training day. And this simply, I mean, pitchers speak a thousand words, right? So these are our teachers actively engaged on whiteboards, in the math, in the E L A, in the other group. Just, I mean, super excited about what they're learning, so that they can take that back to their classroom. The very next day, literally everything they learned, they can apply the very next day and put to use across any subject area. And then, of course, when teachers are actively engaged and excited about what they're doing and learning, kids are actively and excited and engaged. So these are kids in actual classrooms. There's one big one in the bottom center down there that jumped in. It's a little old for fifth grade, but whatever. We let them in. And that's, that's them putting into practice the things that you saw teachers learning about. So pretty exciting stuff. Again, when we can have our peers teaching each other and sharing their knowledge. Any questions about any of that?
Wonderful. Keep up the good work. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any questions? Thomas, Juana?
Nope, we're good.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Middle school.
It's not, he's not an assistant. He's actually gonna take over in a little bit. So, yeah, I'll kind of be business to that. I'm gonna lose that. All right, I just lost that. That's okay. So lucky I brought my own. Because that could have been bad. So we've been working, we've talked earlier this year about how we're doing some work with iReady, and that's specifically because our school improvement plan is based very largely on reading and math skill and trying to help students to do better in reading and math. And as part of that, motivating kids to work on their reading and math skills from wherever they are to move them forward is really important to us. If you're a second grade reader in the sixth grade, we want to still move you up to a grade or two in a year. You know, it's not a, well, you're a lousy reader and we're done with you. No, we, we want to give every kid a year or more's worth of growth in that time that we have them. So that's kind of our goal. So we set out to put together our iReady Race to Progress. If you look at our school, are you gonna throw it up behind you there? Backup one. Thank you, sir. That's what it looked like on November eighteenth. It was pretty blank. We had about thirty-five or forty kids that had earned their way up to that board at that point in time, and so we really kicked it in gear. And we put together the Race to Progress to try to motivate students with a variety of different fun things in order to help them to to be independent learners for both reading and math, and to drive them to complete lessons and to actually pass lessons. So we started off, as I said, pretty low. We had about forty students that were, had ten lessons passed at that point. As of March twentieth, we have a hundred and, go ahead and skip ahead one. Thank you. We have a hundred and twenty-five sixth graders, seventy-two percent of our kids that have passed ten or more lessons. Fifty percent of our seventh graders and fifty-six percent of our eighth graders. Motivating eighth graders can be a challenge at times, folks. I just want to let you know. But we put this up. It's if you come into Rochester Middle School, it's one of the first things you see before you even get to the office. It's right there on the left. And every kid's name, if they've got ten passed, their name is up there, and the number that they're at is actually on the front fender. So you can kind of see how they're doing. That yellow line there. And I'll get to that in a minute. One ahead, please. So we realized that we needed more space, so we've got them going up, and actually they're going across the gym hall there, because we have kids that have done over a hundred. We have almost a handful of kids that have done over a hundred. We've got a ton of kids that have done fifty or more. We've got, we've tried to motivate kids with a skating party. So if you want to go to the roller drome next Wednesday, if you get to seventy-five lessons passed, you are automatically in. And that was our plan, was trying to motivate kids to get to seventy-five. We've actually opened that up just a little bit, as of a week ago. We opened that up and we said, on Friday morning at seven thirty, this Friday at seven thirty, whoever's in our top fifty is getting an invite, wherever you are. And that's where that yellow line comes into play, and you can see the little marker above that line. There's a couple of them to the left. A week ago, that line was there. Three days later, it was one over. Two days after that, there it is. Because kids are working very hard to try to make sure that they are on the right side of that line and that they get an invite to go to the skating party next week. And, and kids have a variety of different things. You know, some kids are motivated by some things, and some kids are motivated by some others. I had a great time chatting with Owen earlier. We were talking about some of the things that motivated him. This is Owen Driver, sixth grader at the middle school. And Owen, were you motivated to try to earn the ice cream bar?
Yeah.
And were you motivated for the popcorn?
Yes.
And what was the next thing that you were kind of motivated on?
Probably the open gym.
Open gym. So we have open gym once a month for the, for a week in the morning. So when you get to school, you can come into open gym. We've got basketball. We've got the wheeze set up on the stage. You can come in and play. There's cornhole out there. There's a bunch of different things. And I was chatting with Owen. Tell me about you and your friends.
Yeah, we were trying to get to the open gym, so we could all be there together.
So there we go, that motivation piece of, you know what, I'm gonna get there. You need to get there, and you need to get there, so we can go in there and play a little basketball, so we can go in there and have some fun. You know, so that kind of piece is a big deal. One ahead, please. So we've worked on this through tiered motivation, as you know, we've talked about there. And one more. One of our tiers was an after-school event. We had an after-school event in the fitness room. If you've been in the fitness room, you know there's plenty of space in there. So we had rock band going on. You see that on the left. We had probably a handful, maybe six video game systems going on. We had kids playing board games. We had popcorn all over the place. We swept, and it was over. It was not custodians job. Um, we had a VR driving game. You can see that on the right-hand side there, a little VR driving game going on. So the kid in the seat there's got the VR set on and everybody can watch kind of what he's driving. He's racing along on a. On a racetrack there. And, and it was just a good time and, and a lot of fun. And, um. Yeah, that's kind of what I have going on. So a trip to the roller drone, next one, please. Is that what I have next? Yep, trip to the road, drones. What's planned for next week? We made that adjustment. You've seen that flyer there? One more, am I have one more? I think I do. I don't have one more. Good. What I have is Owen. Owen is going to demonstrate a reading lesson for you. So this is kind of what, this is what a student sees.
I have to find the thing that matches graceful.
Now, when Owen gets it right, it gets a little bit harder. Nothing better than a bunch of footballs.
No pressure. No pressure, right?
You talked about that. Owen said he had no problems.
Doing great.
He is doing great. And, and his kids do great. When they get to five lessons, they get ice cream. I wasn't trying to bring in ice cream for Owen today, but I did bring in, uh, some chocolate. So, you know, Owen's gonna get to leave with some chocolate. When they get to ten lessons past, they get. Popcorn. So, you know, Owen's getting hooked up with some popcorn. When they do that, they also get some warrior points. So I'm gonna hook him up with some warrior points. Reward just for working here today. And I, I really appreciate it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I had a question. Um. When you're reading this and you're doing this work, is there also like verbal skills where it talks to you as you're working?
Yeah, there's a setting that you can turn on so it'll read it to you.
Okay, so it's, there's more than just, you know, visually you can actually hear it. So, okay, good. Thank you.
You guys all have headphones that you can use or?
Yes.
Also.
During, during class time, but the.
Sometimes during class time, but it's actually, we get way more at home. When a student do, uh, three and a half hours, thirty lessons over the weekend. So. Yeah, that's abnormal. So that's not a, that's not a normal thing. It did happen last weekend.
I've seen that on Xbox, though.
So. Any questions online?
Thomas, any questions?
No questions.
What, Grant?
Alright, thanks for carrying out. Thank you.
Owen, thank you.
I'm here, I gotta follow the kid. I'm here to talk about a student centered, driven intervention. So just an update on some of the progress at the high school. So, uh, eighty-nine percent of our courses were successfully completed by our, our students in semester one. Um, so what that essentially means is of all the students and all the courses, eighty-nine percent of those were passing grades. Uh, we have a tier one intervention of, it's called completion at our high school and typo there. Um, we were able to reduce our total failures by thirty percent just that intervention. So. Of those students who failed, they were given the opportunity. There's a certain parameter of students who are given the opportunity to, um. Hand in a couple of assignments, retake a test, uh, for them to get them above that passing line. So. Because we were able to offer that to all of our students, we were able to reduce our total number of failures by, by thirty percent. Uh, some areas of exceptional performance for students. In our five and forming arts class, and you saw Ms. Cozen here with those students, a ninety-seven percent success rate. Our world language is a ninety-three percent success rate. And then also in our science and math classes, a ninety percent success rate in science and math, which is.
Wonderful.
Yeah, which is, which is really strong, really great. So of our students that failed, not all students, but of the students that failed, we started to gather some data on, are there trends? Are there? Um, are there, you know, is there a pattern here of things that we can start intervening with? So of our students who failed, failed, we found that sixty-five percent of those students were males. Uh, sixty-four percent of those, uh, failures were, were freshmen and that, excuse me, um, sixty-five percent of those failures were males, but. Uh, freshman accounted for, God, I want to, want to say this correctly. Um. Of the total failures, sixty-four percent of them, uh, came from fresh freshmen and seventy-four percent, uh, success rate from sophomore. So that was a success rate. So. Thirty-six percent and twenty-six percent came from freshman and sophomore. So we had issue with freshman and sophomore level with a quarter of them. Uh, to a third of them not, not passing, um, having a failing grade. So obviously that, that's a concern for our younger grades and for our male students. So. We have went through a process to create an intervention for this. Um, this was not something that we, uh, could have predicted when we pulled our quarter one grades. This, this pattern trend didn't exist then, but now it does. Right? So what do we, what do we do about that? So what? Um, that's an easier way to say it. Uh, our male students are accounting for two-thirds of the failing grades. You have only make up one half of the total population. Good thing I put that slide in there. That would help me out a lot. Um, so, so here's our philosophy. Our communication strategies have to change. We really do have to allow parents the opportunity to know where their students are at. And a much more frequent basis and have. Two-way communication about a student's danger of failure. Right? We have to allow parents to be parents, right? And I, I truly believe that our parents are wonderful. And that, you know, when they know something, they're gonna go and do something with their kids. Like, tell me what's going on in this class. Why is this happening? So we will be launching an intervention here, uh, at the end of April. And that's purposeful because we have conferences coming up next, uh, next week and they're gonna hear a little bit. And, um, there's an intervention that's gonna be intertwined with that. I'll speak to you here in a second. But we're gonna have a window of time where teachers are going to be expected to make two-way communication with families for any students who are in danger of failing. We do that right now for seniors, right? So this is not a, a new practice. We just, um, we have to communicate for our seniors to make sure the parents know, like, this could cause an issue with graduation. Right? So we need to make sure that we are communicating really well. So we are just taking that same philosophy and we're expanding it to, um. All students who are in our freshman level courses, right? So. We didn't necessarily feel comfortable with saying just male students because there's more students than that who are failing. So we're just gonna say all students in our freshman level classes, um. That are in danger of, of failing, excuse me, not in freshman level classes. Um, I misspoke. Um, in all classes. Uh, that are, and it's, it's gonna be for all males. So that was the biggest concern was all males. I got sidetracked there a little bit. My, my apologies. Uh, the idea is that we need to be communicating with all students if they're in, in danger of failing. Um, so April, all male students. So between April twenty-seventh and May fourth, the expectation is that all teachers will be reaching out to those families to have those two-way. Uh, communications. The hierarchy of interventions is gonna start with email. Uh, so email's a really effective way to do a mass distribution. Some parents are gonna email you back and say, thank you for letting me know. Uh, we will, we'll have a conversation about this and we'll, we'll make a plan together. Parents who don't necessarily, uh, aren't able to email us back, that's when our teachers are gonna be making phone calls and saying. You know, uh, you know, sent you an email last week. Have you been able to review it? Um, here's what's going on in class. Sometimes we're not gonna be able to get hold of parents through phone calls or emails. So that's when we'll be sending certified letters to initiate conversation. Those certified letters aren't going to be. Here's a letter about your child's performance. It's going to be, here's a letter. I've been trying to contact you. Please contact me at your earliest convenience to discuss your, your, your child's concern I have with your. With your class. Um, admin or meeting with any students who are failing through more classes during conferences for an early intervention. So. Typically, the way conferences work is all the teachers go out and they meet with their students in CSR. They do the student-led conference. They talk about their goals for the year, the goals for next year, if they achieve their goals this year, what their plans are, which is just wonderful, right? And that starts. But we have kids right now who need more than that. So, uh, Ms. Brooks and I, uh, the assistant principal, Ms. Brooks, will be, are meeting with every. Student who are failing three or more classes for an early intervention. So. There's obviously something going on if at, uh, quarter three, you've got three or more Fs and we need to have a much deeper level of conversation about. What's happening and what we can do to change that course. It's not too late. So, um, that is, I don't think, I think that's, that is really what, what our, our intervention looks like here coming up in, in Q three. You folks have any questions?
I guess, um, my first question, so it's all the boys' fault?
No, it's not all the boys' fault, right?
Okay, right. Make sure, I was, I was, you know, um. What kind of, what's our percentage of kids that are failing three or more classes at high school level right now?
Um, I don't, I couldn't tell you the percentage. I know that Ms. Brooks and I have, uh, roughly twenty conference spots apiece and most of those are filled, but they're also double blocked. Right? So a typical conference is about twenty minutes in length and that's too short of a time to solve much of anything. So. Um, we have them scheduled for forty minutes and I do know each of us have about, about twenty over in that time.
My assumption is if they're failing three or more classes, they're already in conversations with their parents.
Yeah, uh, they're, they're definitely are like. We know these, we know these students pretty well and we know these families pretty well. Um, this is just a level of support they probably haven't received, right? And, uh, we do owe, there's much, there's, there's bigger issues, right? When a kid is failing through more classes, there's bigger issues going on. This is not a, I'm really struggling math. I'm really struggling in English. I don't understand my social studies class. Um, these are. You know, oftentimes really sensitive issues like family, uh, concerns or, um, trauma or. Uh, other factors that we really need to start unpacking and it all starts with building that relationship with family. So. This is a hope to bring people in to start to have just open and honest conversations about what we can do to help. Um, because it's not working, right? It's not working for, for folks. So we need to make sure that we're extending that opportunity for. Um, our teachers and our staff to provide the level of support because we have great supports for kids, right? But we have to get kids to access those supports. And without that level of care and without that personal connection, that, that access might not happen.
I appreciate you doing it earlier with the intervention before they get to twelfth grade and then the parents find out later, it's like, we need a lot more than three credits. In order to graduate. So thank you guys.
Uh, classes where maybe a student failed the first semester of English. Sure. Well, in the second semester of English, i- is the, is part of the intervention able to get a passing grade for the year for credit or is it just?
So, so we had that lovely, that wasn't a policy, it's the appropriate word we use for it, a. A resolution, uh, during COVID where kids could recapture credit from birth back through the second semester for that, that resolution expired. Um, so we, we do have still our master recrediting policy though. So. That is where, you know, if we can right the ship now for this student's second semester and they pass their second, second semester class, and let's say they're a freshman. They can go to tenth grade English and if they meet standard in their first semester of tenth grade English, they can go back and reclaim credit for it. So. It, the, the mechanism still exists, but it's a little bit, uh, you know, it's not immediate. Uh, but, but if, if we get them on the right track and we do what we, we need to be doing, that student should be successful moving into the future as well.
Thanks. Wonderful. Juana, Thomas, any questions?
No, I just, um, I just had a, a comment. Um, when, uh, Michael said that. Uh, it's sometimes it's like a family supporter, more family issues. Uh, that could be, uh, an issue because I know that sometimes, or all the time. Students can retake their tests. They can go home and study and then there's always retakes or. They can turn in their homework late and, and stuff like that. So it's, it's. Uh, it's giving them the opportunity, but if they don't have that support system, um, or just for families. That can entail that.
Yeah. And that was a beautiful product of going through. Our pandemic, right? Is before then it was really strict and you have to get it done here and you only have so much time to retake tests. Now I'm not gonna retake, but. We had to kind of scrap that during the pandemic and. And helped kids. So we kept that in place. Like, that's a good thing for kids. Like, we care about learning, not the due date. We care about them learning math, learning English and, and getting these standards and concepts down.
Absolutely.
Thomas, any questions?
Yeah.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Right. We are now. At our budget committee report.
So we have two members from our budget committee, Amanda Volcak and Ashley Hootston, who are going to be. Uh, sharing with you information about. A process that the budget committee went through and, um, though at the end, we'll also share the recommendations that the budget committee has for the board to consider as we move forward. And, uh, developing our budget for next year.
Thank you. Um, I'm Ashley. I'm Amanda Volcak. Uh, so as you know, um, with the expiration of the S R funds, our district has to trim out over a million dollars, um, from our budget for the next year. And those cuts, um, need to be sustainable for three to five years. So a budget committee was formed with a variety of stakeholders from within the district to review the budget and then come to a consensus regarding. What to recommend to all of you for reductions. We did not come to these recommendations lightly. A group of thirty-five plus stakeholders comprised of a mix of all associations, union representatives. Parents, students, admin and community members all came together over the course of several months to take a deep dive into the budget. To see where there might be wiggle room to make these cuts in such a way that it doesn't. Uh, negatively impact the students or the necessary functions of the district. Uh, we were all grounded in the fact that we have over two thousand students. Counting on us to advocate for them and help make Rochester School District the very best district it can be. Another challenge for the committee was to weigh through the massive list of recommendations, um, from the. Community and ensure that the, any proposed cuts were coming from the right part of the budget. Um, which is the general fund and that it didn't interfere with the board's priority list. Our meeting was broken down into four sessions where we started by establishing our process and agreeing on the parameters that we were working within. Um, then on February fifteenth, we broke into groups to identify the possible impacts for each of the proposed changes recommended by the staff. Students, parents and community members. Having such a wide range of differing opinions was really helpful as we examined each item from every angle to determine any possible ripple effects. Then March first and March fifteenth, we all tried to identify which items could make the final recommendation list. Which included a healthy debate and input from individuals that had details that were vital to these discussions. Ultimately, we came to a consensus regarding what we were, um, regarding what we are reviewing tonight. Before we dive into the recommendation, uh, the recommendations, I would like to review a few things that weighed into our decision. First is a quick review of the basic ed fund. This is the bucket that we were looking to trim out over a million dollars out of. Several of the recommendations recommended by the community members and staff actually were paid for out of other parts of the budget. Making it tricky for the committee to stay on track discussing and trimming items from the correct budgets. As you can see, this chart shows the planned use of S R funds for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, and you can see that non-staffing cost accounted for just shy of a million dollars and then the remaining amount was spent on staffing. Um, so that shows that basic ed teaching staff, that was a million dollars, a million forty-two, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. Um, and then the other certificated staff was four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars and some change. Um, in addition to that, what we saw was a huge jump in the cost of employee salaries from the twenty-twenty-one year to the twenty-one, twenty-two year. Um, and it seems like that would be a really easy thing to blame for the need for budget reductions, but it's a lot more complex than it actually appears. Um, we recognize that that increase was due to contract negotiations and part of it was directly related to COVID nineteen. Collectively as a group, we felt like sticking to the goal of ten percent better than contract language for staffing was not only attainable. But a necessity for the students in Rochester. Every attempt was made to minimize increasing class size and cutting the budget for teacher salaries. However, with seventy-five percent of our budgets being spent on employee salary and benefits, we're not sure we could achieve that million dollar reduction without looking at staffing. Alright. So with all of that said, here are the proposed budget cut recommendations. First is the in-house subs. This item was the first on our list because it's such a large savings to the district. The group felt. The group felt that we could achieve filling sub-spots without keeping them in-house, which is much more expensive. Our district is seeing, um, other districts are seeing budget reductions as well, and we believe that this will increase the available subs in the sub pool. Next on our list was the district office receptionist. While we understand this will require redistribution of job duties, after some discussion, we felt like this would be possible while minimizing the disruption to the kids within the district. Next on our list was replacing the RHS College Career Counselor with an EA that is passionate about helping college and career with college and career questions. Through our debate on this subject, we felt that an EA would be able to provide some of the needed supports to our high school students, building upon the structures that have already been put in place. While we explored eliminating this position entirely, we felt that this was not in the best interest of the kids at RHS. Some of the job duties would need to be redistributed among other certificated staff. Next up is the elimination of one special education teacher. Uh, after much discussion with the administrators, we're confident that our district can maintain the low contract case language for caseloads without a negative impact to the students. Next on our list, uh, we have replacing the certificated coach that is paid for out of the basic ed funds with an EA. While this will require a job duty rewrite to remove some of the duties those positions have been covering, the committee felt this was a significant enough savings that it did make sense. Next on our list is eliminating the out-of-district trips for the staff. This is not a complete cut, it's just the part that comes out of the basic education fund. Uh, and then building budget being reduced by twenty percent. This was originally proposed as maintenance and building budgets together. Um, however, the group felt very strongly that cutting our maintenance funds would be detrimental for a variety of reasons. Uh, the age of our buildings, a struggle with past bonds, and the ongoing maintenance items that just can't wait three to five years. Uh, so ultimately, we agreed if it were separated, it would be considered a reasonable tightening of the belt. Um, next on our list is to eliminate extra time card time, sticking to the contract language and eliminating additional paid hours before and after school. Similar to the out-of-district training cut, this is not a complete cut, it is just the part that's paid out of the basic education fund. Um, workbooks, uh, this was brought up multiple times by the community. The overall consensus was, um, from the committee was that we are wasting money on workbooks because they often are only being used small portions at a time, um, and some teachers don't utilize them at all. So we felt as a group that going back to photocopies would be a way to accomplish the same end result for a much lower price. And as a last resort, the group is recommending cutting three FTEs and increasing class sizes. After evaluating and cutting everything that we could out of other categories, it has become clear that we will likely not be able to complete this budget reduction without at least looking at this. However, we do feel that while we couldn't avoid it completely by limiting it to three FTEs, uh, we can still keep our class sizes smaller than the recommended ten percent better than contract language as recommended by you, the board. Um, I think I speak for all of the committee, and I know a lot of people in this room are on the committee. Uh, this was probably the hardest committee that we have ever participated in, at least, at least for me, I can say that. Um, and we did not take these recommendations lightly, and we don't envy the board as they debate and come to consensus on the final budget cuts. Thank you for all you do for the Rochester kiddos, and thanks for everything. Any questions? Um, Jill might have to help us if you have, like, really
I say that I could probably say there's, like, three people in this room that weren't involved with this. Yeah. And so I understand that a lot of work went into this and a lot of back and forth engagement. And I am very thankful that our superintendent was there to help guide the show. Um, we try to keep people on track and keep them forward to these uh, conversations that were taking place, and they were very hard conversations. I I'm familiar with all this, and and I know that the board needs to look at all this stuff and 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 evaluate that things have been brought forward. Grant, do you have any questions here?
Not really, I just want to share my thanks uh, for participation and your willingness to represent the group tonight. It's, I really appreciate it.
Definitely. Thank you. Uh, Juana or Thomas? You have any questions? Anything to discuss, or? Well, we'll be looking at all this later.
No.
Right.
I don't know if he has anything to add. Ashton was part of the committee, too.
That was, I mean, it was uh, despite the uh, it was just it was tough. Uh, lots of our conversations. It was a great learning experience. That's a one positive I can bring from that. But um, every night I would go home and be like, I can't I was just, I had to lay back for a while. It was a thinker. Um, I'm not sure how much we can talk about with the cameras here, but yeah, but um, yeah, and there, I'm glad I was able to participate.
Well, glad you were there. And Amanda and Ashley, thank you very much for presenting that tonight and speaking for the committee. And I appreciate you being willing to do that. Did a great job.
So
now we look forward to the next item on the agenda. Jill with her budget report.
Now, let me tell you why we had to make those budget cut recommendations. Starting with our student F P account for March, um, our F P actually So our student F P actually increased about two students from February for March, which is atypical, but great news. Um, we had sixty-eight students participating in Renee Start and thirty-three are running start only. Um, Hart High School stayed consistent, the grade levels changed. If I had a guess, seven-eleventh grader now qualifies for twelfth grade, um, but stayed at forty-point-two-one. Our special education count increased slightly to three-twenty-four, and we mean, seen three students at gravity. So here's the visual of the K twelve F T E in our current years, the red line, so you'll see that pop up from um, February to March, which is atypical, but good news, and I'll take it. Um, so this is our five separate funds and their ending fund balance. Um, our general fund ending fund balance is seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That doesn't mean we have seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars at the bank. We're double entry accounting, so have liabilities and assets. Our bank account is over a million dollars. Our capital projects fund ended at four point one million, debt service at seven hundred and twenty-six, A S B at five hundred and thirty-six, and transportation vehicle at a hundred and fifty. For budget status, uh, the month of February, the fiscal year is fifty percent of the year complete. Our revenues are at forty-seven point eight-two, and our expenditures at nearly fifty-two. Um, this is an additional breakdown for February, the ending fund balance. There's three hundred and fifty-two restricted for carryover, and the balance is restricted to the local sub-fund. So at this moment in time, um, we don't have unreserved fund balance, but the the state doles out money in such a way that it's very normal for January, February, March to be your lowest revenue months, and then we get our uh, levy payment in April, and then it'll spike back up. Any questions?
The the bump in F T E March, we'll have normal, um, that trends uh, flat for the rest of the year. I guess we'll, we'll know more next month, but what does is to change that would have in our budget outlook.
Right. So um, we are, we are currently about a hundred and nineteen F T E over budget. Um, so any increase is just extra money in the balance, so.
Right. Thanks.
That's what we need right now.
Great. We got a lot of students in our schools. That's that's a big plus. We are looking at budget cutting, uh, we are not in the boat, as some of the bigger districts are, that are up north of us, where they have had significant student loss. And and that is a, a large portion of our funding from the state, correct? Juana? Thomas, any questions for Jill?
Neil, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Thomas.
Okay, great. I've been having some uh microphone issues here. No, I I didn't have any, um, I didn't have any questions for her this time.
Awesome. Thank you, Thomas.
You're welcome.
All right. And then the next report will be the superintendent's report. Um, I should probably ask if anybody would like to leave that that's given their reports already, that you don't have to stick around for the rest of the meeting. I know you guys have to get to work early tomorrow. So I want to make sure I put that out there, so you guys have the opportunity to leave if you need to. Um, superintendent's report.
All right. So just a few things for you tonight. First of all, oh, gosh, I think it was last Thursday or Friday, last Thursday. Um, we, um, myself, Justin, Kelly, Kelsey, and Jill, um, were all able to go, and we were judges at the Future Chefs Competition that's at XO, but on for our kids. It was a wonderful event. Um, we had some great food. Absolutely amazing. I mean, these are fourth and fifth graders who were making third, fourth, sorry, all right. So third graders in there as well. Um, and they made the most creative things. We had fruit sushi. Um, we had, the winner was this Dylan up in the top right-hand corner, and she made these wonderful little uh, it was a peanut butter granola or oatmeal type cup with some yogurt type uh, filling with fruit on the top. We had mushroom sauce on pasta. We had macaroni and cheese with spinach in it. We had pineapple, um, then we grilled pineapples with uh, like a cinnamon brown sugar and cream on it. Uh, what am I missing?
The frouche.
The frouche, fruit sushi. I see, I said fruit sushi. By the way, yes. You're right. Um, there was one other that, oh, we had some hummus. It was very good. Um, yeah, I can't think. Is it, is that it? All right. So a really, a a wonderful event, and you can see that um, all of, not all, but many of the kitchen staff were there and helping the kids, which was really neat to see in partnering with our kids and helping them learn how to use some of the equipment that was in the big kitchen. And they, every, you know, taste was involved in this, presentation was involved. It was like a miniature chop, except we didn't chop anybody. So it was a really fun event. Um, next, I just wanted to point out that we have now done our second, third setting, we're the second set of learning walks. And we continue to see some really great things that are happening in our buildings. A few of the items are there bulleted, but um, you know, academic and instructional vocabulary is being used throughout our buildings. Teachers are being really intentional about teaching uh, the vocabulary and then having students use that vocabulary, which is really important. Um, watching students work with each other. They're going to learn more when they are doing the work and they're engaging in their work. Um, so that we saw a lot of that with kids working with kids in either small groups or partners, and it's really um, done with intention, which is gonna help them be more purposeful in the learning that comes out of that partner work. Um, clear routines and procedures were there. Thomas and I saw that when we were walking in some of our buildings. Um, they're doing some building walks. We had, uh, we saw extra support being provided for struggling students. So that's something we continue to work on, but it's definitely starting to happen in our building when we see a student that's struggling. Not only were there systems and structures in place to provide it maybe outside of a uh, traditional classroom, but right there during class, the students who were struggling were getting extra support, which is what we're working towards for all of our kids. Um, flexible seal seating, that's um, really a good thing to see in a classroom because the kids are comfortable in their learning. You know, some are sitting on the, I call them rocking chairs, but they're chairs that rock. Um, some were sitting on the floor, some were sitting in regular chairs. Um, teachers were not letting that get in the way of of learning if it was appropriate for what they were doing at the time. The kids didn't have to be sitting right in a seat all day long. If we think about six hours sitting in a chair, that can get long. So allowing the kids to move around and really being intentional about kids needing to get up and move and do do some different things so that they are still engaged and ready to learn. And then um, assuring that teachers are giving feedback to kids, and that was something we saw at the high school, where students were getting feedback. We saw it everywhere, but it was really good to see at the high school where kids were getting a lot of feedback about what they were doing. And it was immediate feedback rather than um, having to wait for days on end before they heard how they uh, were progressing in their learning. So just a few things about what we're seeing. I do want to let you know that um, the Washington School Improvement Framework has identified schools that are on uh, different tiers of support that they um, identify every year. It's called the WISF. And you might start hearing about this in some of the different meetings you're attending. Um, we do have three schools that are identified as uh, buildings where we're going to be targeting our, our focus and work work with students. They aren't none of them are any surprises. Um, these are all areas where we were targeting um, our work with kids and with the staff and assuring uh, we were being intentional about working with uh, kids in the identified areas here, but it uh, does come with some additional supports from the state, and so we will working to fill out some um improvement plans that align with the work we need to do, and then uh, making sure that we're doing what the state does ask us to do with this. But like I said, we had three schools, tier two was Grand Mound. They were targeted in three areas. Um, you can see those areas to uh, the middle school, sorry, is tier three. Um, primarily because of the multilingual students and and the progress that they're making or were, haven't been making at the middle school level. And that's a area where we have a lot of new kids coming in, and we need to continue to make sure we're meeting the needs of those kids. And then Hart, Hart has been identified uh, gosh, since before COVID. And they're identified because of graduation rate. It's really not a surprise because our kids at Hart are typ- typically there because they were struggling in some of their credits and um, needed to be there. So it's nice, we get a little extra funding for Hart, but it, we probably will be on tier three at, with Hart for a long time. But I just didn't want you to be surprised. We'll have more information about that and show you some data at a different date. Uh, finally, I want to remind you that there are equity training opportunities for the board. The WASD is doing them online now. And there are training dates there in April. You can see the sixth, the fourth, the sixth, the tenth, the twelfth, the seventeen. If you um, want to sign up for any of those, Shona will help you get signed up for them. Um, we need, do need to have everybody take two trainings um, during your term in office, you're, you need to take at least one this year, and then take a second one as soon as possible afterwards. Um, and then after that, you have to take a additional course every uh, term that you're in office. Every four years. Mm-hmm. Got to take two right now, and then you take one every subsequent term. Um, and if you've already done one, then you just would need one more. So it's a total of five hours of training, which is two uh, two trainings.
Wonderful. Glad you see they've gotten that improved.
Yeah.
When we went to the Spokane, they had already pre-filled what they were actually going to do, and they weren't offering anything for anyone that didn't pre-register that we didn't know about. So.
So these are all there, and they're waiting for people to sign up. So the final thing, I said the final thing on the last, but this is the final. This is the budget process, and I just want to um, one more time, thank everybody that was a part of the committee. It really was a, a difficult process, but they, the team took it really, really seriously, had a lot of really good conversations. Um, I think we all learned about the budget process and about different uh, items that we can consider when we're looking at a budget process. Um, right now, as you know, these recommendations will be used to, in the development of that final budget. And um, I'll work with uh, Jill, and we'll be work, working to put that together and come to you for more input on you know, using the recommendations provided. How do you feel about it? Um, where do you, where do you want, how do you want to proceed? Um, and that will happen on the twelfth of April. We have a, a meeting there. Um, we do um, have to make sure that we're preparing for the need to um, have a reduction in force. And there is a motion on the, or an item on the agenda later today uh, that allows us to make or approve reductions in forces if they are needed. As we're moving forward, and so that has to be done this month to prepare for the work that we will do next month in finalizing our budget. Um, ultimately, the board approves that budget, but we will be putting together recommendations for you.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
Yeah.
I'm looking back at the reports and so at Hart right now, we have forty point two one. Yeah, basically have forty children that are enrolled over at Hart. They said that that was a tier.
There are tier threes support. They get tier three support and it's because the students there have not graduated on time. It's not that they don't graduate, but they they end up qualifying for tier three supports because they didn't graduate in four years.
So which is worse, tier one or tier four?
Uh tier three is a a more supported uh tier to be on. Tier one, you don't get any supports. But but you still are aware you're on tier one.
Okay.
And so the supports increase as we go higher in the tiers.
Wonderful. I'd say that uh at our last budget meeting that we were at, I had the opportunity to sign a high school diploma for. Uh a young man who was graduating.
Yep.
It took him seven years.
And did it.
And he did it.
Yes.
And that was so cool and I'm really thankful that we have that program with Hart. And everybody deserves that opportunity. They might not get it in form, but the fact it continue on and continue on and a lot of that has to do with. Um the people that are operating it and 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 it's wonderful that the district is able to have the people in place to help these kids achieve. These challenges, so I thank everybody. Uh does anybody else have any questions for the superintendent at this time? Wanda, Thomas, anything?
Hey Neil.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead. One of you at a time.
Do we, do we as a board uh get to sit? And discuss this budget uh items that the committee presented to us?
Yes, April twelfth.
Oh, April twelfth, okay.
Yeah.
We will have a time set aside for us to all go over these items.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Hey Neil, is is the reason that the uh next, next board meeting on the twelfth is because of spring break? During the Sep third, uh third through the seventh?
I think that's the normal day. That's the second Wednesday.
Oh, okay. And and can you send me those um those dates in an email too for that?
Yep.
Training.
We search, oh, for the, for the equity training?
Yes.
Yes, we will make sure you get that.
Excellent. That's all I had for that.
I'm just glad it's available.
Yes.
The availability of that training that was required by the state has been very hard to acquire. So uh I'm glad to see that they branched out on all that stuff. Okay, uh and with that, I guess we are on to new business. And we have an administration reduction education plan?
Right, so this is the resolution that the board has to pass in March for us to make any reduction in force. As you read this, you do see that it does state um. That certificated staff may be reduced up to nine FTE. That does not mean we're reducing nine FTE. But if we accept everything that's on the uh budget committee's uh proposal, that would be eight certificated C. FTE that we could end up needing to reduce if we don't have retirements, resignations uh for anything else. The classified staff, at this point, there's no recommendation from the budget committee to reduce any classified staff. There is three on there so that if there was a decision moving forward that we needed to make any additional reductions. Uh we could reduce up to three. And then unrepresented staff or any staff that are not um represented by a union. And we would be able to, with the passage of this resolution, uh reduce up to two FTE in those areas.
So do we need to make a motion to approve this?
Need a motion, yep.
All right, so uh somehow I will make a motion to approve the uh reduction education plan? Is there a second?
Second that emotion, that motion.
Thank you, Thomas. Is there any discussion? If not, uh we'll call for a vote, voice vote?
Hi.
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 All right, any opposed? No, hearing none is approved. Great, uh the next uh order of business is operations asset preservation.
So I believe uh Ed is, Ed is on his, he started vacation about three hours ago, so. Um and so, and I talked, uh talked this morning about uh the, what's called the ICOS reports, the ICOS. Uh which is asset preservation. And so in your, in in board docs, you you'll notice that you have uh three up there. Um the R RPS building, the RPS gymnasium building and the Rochester Middle School are all um all the buildings that were. I believe that were built after nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand um have to go through this process annual. And really what these reports do is they, they they show our community and and the school district that, and and the state that we're actually taking care of our facilities. Is they're very expensive uh facilities to build and whatnot. So are they, are we taking care of them? Are they aging well? Are we making sure that we maintenance them? In in a proper way. So um when when looking, looking at those, uh Ed and I were having a conversation this morning. Um every, everything, the middle school has been uh put into work order and is and has already either been been completed or is on schedule. Uh to do uh updates. Uh for instance, there's a couple of sidewalks that tree roots have caused some settling and whatnot. That they will be taken care of uh this summer. Uh but the other items, other items in there have uh have already been um on work orders. And are either being fixed or have been fixed. Um at the primary, and so I guess, is there any questions about the middle school report or anything? And before I move on to the primary school?
No questions here. Wanda, any questions?
No, no, I was looking at the reports like ninety percent good, so we still have some time.
Yeah, no, the building's in pretty good, actually very good shape for a middle school. Um the the primary school, I think the the main thing to point out there and it's something that I I I think Ed's brought up in conversations already this year with the board. Is um there there are certain sections of the of the roof of the primary school that are in need of uh repair and or cleaning. Uh in order to extend, extend the life. Um and and specifically ridge cap. Uh on top of the gym and 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 the meeting building, uh as there, there are some things, nails popping up on the ridge cap. And there's uh the north side of the building doesn't get a lot of sun. Uh especially how, where it's, how it's facing and how the sun comes across and some of the large duck firsts that are closer to the dairy that don't cause things to dry out very well. So the the roof is, you you know, the roof is twenty-one, twenty-two years old. Um you you know, it's probably about in the right range percentage left of life. But there is a little bit, there is a few things that we can do to probably to make sure that that roof makes it to the end of life before replacement needs to be done. And so uh Ed's working on getting some uh some bids on what it would take to do some roof cleaning and to fix the uh the ridge cap issue. Uh to make sure that we don't get further down the road and have to start replacing ceiling tiles and things like that because of water stains, so.
So he's not here, but is there like a, you said that we have trees that are interfering or causing?
Well, that's really on other, other people's property. Some of those properties are so tall and you know, root. You know, here in the state, right, uh things got to dry out and if you got a lot of duck firsts around your property and how that sun comes across the horizon. It it's kind of difficult for that north side of the building to not have moss on it.
I didn't realize there was actually a property that wasn't ours that was close to the building.
Well, it it's, it's just close enough. Like I said, when that sun is low on the horizon and where that building is, yes, winter time, it's gonna build, there's gonna be a lot of buildup.
Okay.
So and the backside of the building has a lot of intricate uh areas on the, on the backside, so.
Okay.
But the, but the condition of the buildings, I, you know, are are actually really good. We have to also remember. They are just over twenty years old, both of those buildings. And they're twenty years old, right? I mean, so, yeah.
And we just got done re-upping the elementary school last year.
Right, yes, yeah.
We had issues there that we didn't have addressed.
Yep.
Wonderful.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, resolution needs to be approved.
Yeah.
Do I need to make a motion to?
Or we need to have somebody make a motion?
I'll move to approve more resolution twenty-three dash zero two asset preservation program.
I will second that. All right, is is there uh uh any opposed? Did I say it wrong?
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes. Yeah, I figured it out.
You've got it.
I'm sorry, everyone. Doing this once a month, it's not like I get practiced like every two weeks or every week. If I was doing this every week. But I'm gonna be practicing in my year. I will get better. Uh all right, so now we are curriculum. Uh instructional materials for Rochester Middle School enrichment.
Yeah, so here, um asking that a novel be approved for uh enrichment class enrichment is during the first period at uh. Our RMS, the uh teacher here, they they've, the other two novels in this, in the, in this three novel series uh were approved. Um and the teacher's asking that the third novel by the author so that kids can actually finish the, finish the series. Um would would be approved. Um and so thi- this has gone through uh the ELA Content Committee. It's gone to uh District Curriculum Committee, DCC, and is uh now in front of you guys for approval.
Okay. So um. And make a, someone like to make a motion to approve uh subject of curriculum instructional materials? So moved. You'll second that? All right, is there any discussion? All right, uh there's no discussion. Um all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? You've uh passed that along. All right, that that motion passes. Next, we have technology.
I hope this is the last time I'm talking tonight, so. Technology, it's not funny, Wanda. The, this uh, this one here, I, there are two uh uh requests uh in this, in this part of the agenda. The, the first request is for um to approve dark fiber. Um the, the district uh put out for bid both lit and dark fiber in order to connect the networks between. Uh Hart District Office uh and the middle school and connect those uh those two uh entities back to the rest of our network. Which is over at the high school, the Grand Mound and uh the primary school. And so in in order to to do that and to be able to use grant money, uh that's offered by uh the FCC. We have to go out and 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 do this and do this process. Um this process was done sixty months ago. So we're, we're at the end of a sixty-month current lease of dark fiber. Our dark fiber currently uh moves from. Uh connects this, this building back to Grand Mound uh with one strand and connects the middle school back to Grand Mound with with the strand. And that's how we send, so we get the internet transport going um and and everything uh that way. So um I put back out again and I'm required by uh in order to uh, for grant money, I have to uh put out an RFP for both lit and dark fiber. Uh dark fiber means we just lease the, the one strand, in this case, two strands of uh tiny fiber optic. Um and we put, and we light it on both ends with our own equipment. Lit fiber means the company lights it for us. Uh they use their uh transceivers uh and and then we hook into their, their stuff and then we can transport uh ones and zeros back across that tiny little. Uh strand. Um at, at this point, uh the RFPs came back uh going, going through the rubric and everything. Um I would recommend to the board that we move forward with astound broadband, which is uh, I think they've changed their name five times in five years. That used to be wave broadband. Um astound, uh they were the, the company that also won the bid uh sixty months ago. Um as they came in uh the least, least amount of cost um and meet all the requirements of, in order to uh accept the federal grant money. That goes with that. Um as part of that, because of the um income survey that uh that we gave at the beginning of the year. The income survey results were high enough that it also allowed us to, instead of getting a seventy percent discount with our grant. Were able to apply for an eighty percent discount. So not only did the price, will the price from the last sixty-month contract be less this, this go around. We're also gonna pay ten percent less than that less amount. Um so uh as we're paying about twelve hundred dollars a month currently, that's gonna, our, our share is gonna go down to around four hundred dollars a month. In order for this, for this to go. So it it's, it's really a win-win for us. Um and the, this grant will, will, will get about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars over the sixty months uh in, in the grant money. So, okay. No, because they have to be done separately. I'll let you go ahead and do that and then I'll talk about the next one.
Uh I I got a question first.
Mm-hmm, yes, Thomas.
So Justin, did you just say that the company that we're going with has changed its name at least five times?
Yes, they keep buying more companies and getting bigger and change their name and, and it's also a company that uh. K twenty network uses in order to provide internet and networking for around the state, all the way up through um higher end.
Okay, because of.
Don't worry, my rep hasn't changed though. My rep has been the same.
Okay, because when I, when, when I heard you say it changed names five times, it, it makes it sound like it's some kind of shady business.
Yeah, no, as Grant would remind me, so, so has, Lumen used to be Central Link, which used to be Quest, which used to be US whatever, which used to be Marvel. So you know, I know it's been a few more years of name changes, but you know, it's someone.
I know who Marvel is.
I knew you would, Thomas.
So Neil had to step out. We'll wait just a second and then move forward. We have to take separate.
Motions on.
Motions.
You want me to start talking about the next one and then?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and do that.
All right, so the, the next one is uh wireless um access points. Uh and to replace our wireless system within our school district. It was twenty fifteen was the last time uh we did an update on our wireless infrastructure. In, in our buildings. Um and and I believe actually, early in the year, when, when uh uh Mike, Mike Smith came to us. One of the, one of the feedback from students was the wireless at the high school was really slow. Well, the wireless at the high school and around our district is eight years old. Eight-year-old technology is, might as well be a hundred years old, right? Uh as, as far as technology goes. So um ag- again, this was uh put out, put out to bid this, the eight-year cycle is, is. And what is, what was the plan? Um and moving, moving forward. Um and I, I believe actually we, with what I'm uh suggesting here, we actually should be able to go, get away with nine years on this next cycle. So uh went out, went out to bid for uh for wireless to re- uh replace. We, we asked for, for bids. Um for Aruba Wireless, which is uh made by Hewlett Packard now. Um and uh and their equivalent. And so we had a variety of bids, bids come in on that. Um and I'm, I'm recommending that we, that we move forward with uh a, a tri-band um Aruba. Which means it will allow for a two-point-four, a five gigahertz and a six gigahertz rather than a, a dual uh band uh that we currently have. Um and and so I had, I had the bid come in writing ways and and this is gonna be most, the most cost-effective. Again, because of our income survey and and our ability to apply for a, a higher a grant amount. Um this project will actually come in less money than the project did in twenty fifteen. Um and and the, the total grant money on this one will be right around a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars of grant money. Uh and uh it'll, it'll cost us around thirty-four thousand dollars. Um so we will be getting, you know, almost a hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of. Uh um wireless technology for, you know, twenty percent, pennies on the dollar. Um it's, it's a pretty darn good deal and going tri-band, I do believe we can go nine years uh in this cycle of wireless, so. And uh and the company, Micro K twelve, is a local company out of Lynwood. Um and and a, a partner that I've worked with in, in the past and and they've been, they've been very good to work with uh when putting together a little bit, so.
And where, where is this thirty-four thousand dollars coming from? Is this gonna affect our? Any kind of budget or any, you know?
It, it was, it was budgeted in, coming into this year, as we knew this was a, both of these projects were projects that we were gonna have to uh do coming into the year.
Okay.
Yep.
So we need two motions. The first one will be for the, for the fiber.
All right, uh, all right, uh with that, uh like, I guess I'd like to make a motion to. Uh consideration to award the, award the bid or.
Award the bid.
Or the bid is presented for uh RFP fiber? Correct? Sorry?
I'll say, oh, what, what do, what do you need? It's a little slow here. I heard, I thought I heard a second, so.
We have a second, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, uh, it passes. And then on to the next one, we will need uh same thing, uh, situation to award the bid to RFS Wireless. We take, take a motion? I'd like to make a motion. Yeah, and we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Yes, and all in, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 I'm losing connection.
Yeah, yeah, we hear you. Is there any opposed? Hearing none opposed? Motion passes. All right, and the next on our list of new business is vehicle fund. A new school bus. Ooh. All right.
So this is exactly what it says. It's for the purchase of a new school bus. Um, it probably will not be here until about, well, it won't be here until sometime next year. Um, which is good because then we will be closer to having all of the hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars that we need to pay for it. Right now, we have about a hundred and fifty in our vehicle transportation. Um, so this is just timely. We will get the bus and once we get the bus. The current bus that we own that first student uses will be surplus. And here is a picture of the bus we will be getting if anybody does want to see it.
It is a fancy bus. I can be a van away for a moment.
It's still a yellow limousine.
It's a cheese wagon.
Uh, and this is, this, we've been, we've been trying to get money up for this for several years, right? This is.
Yes, yep.
And just face a vehicle bucket.
Yes, yes.
So this has a separate funding source mechanisms, totally separate from the stuff we've been addressing. With the removal of the SRS funds for anyone that's, does not know, this is its own separate account. And that's a good-looking bus, I gotta say. Uh. So, uh, at this point in time, we need to make a motion that we have to do. All right. At this point in time, we need to make a motion to approve the expenditure of the new bus.
From the vehicle fund.
From the vehicle fund.
Someone.
All right. Do we have a second? Thank you, wanna. All right, um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, vehicle fund passes. Thank you, everyone. And the next on our new business is the ASB Evergreen Sportsman Club donation. Do the school for the trap shooting team.
Yes, and so they had a big, um. Not a tournament, but it, they had a fundraiser, a fundraising event for the, for the high school trap shooting, shooting team and. Um, a very successful fundraiser um earned two thousand fifty dollars and now the uh. The club is donating that back to the ASB for the, for our new trap shooting club.
Sure, cool.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
We have eight students currently out for the trap shooting club.
Awesome. Okay, so at this time, we need to make a, a motion to approve, uh, to accept this funding. Does anyone like to make a motion to this?
So moved.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
I have a second still.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, we have a first and second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes.
You do a thank you.
Oh, definitely, yes. Good call.
Wonderful, yeah. Nice to uh. Let them, let them know and let them have some recognition too and it's a wonderful thing to help support our, our school students. Um, at this point in time, uh, we have a public comment for items that were not on the agenda tonight.
No one in the room, but uh, and I just put it out on in chat if there was anyone. Um, and so I'm just. Fifteen, twenty more seconds.
Move in thirty seconds. You still on that slow dial up? Let me know when, Justin. Don't have anyone? All right. And with that, uh, we have no one uh make comment in our last public comment period. And at this point in time, we, the board will go into executive session.
For forty minutes.
About forty minutes tonight.
So we will come out at uh eight forty-five.
And, thank you, we will come out at eight forty-five. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Take a five-minute break?
Yep.
Yes, for those of you that are on, on Zoom, if you would like to hang around for forty minutes, I will need to put you into the waiting room. Until the board comes out of executive session, then I will let, let people back in at that time.
What's that? All right. Oh, okay. No action. Do you want to, wanted to say that?
What's that?
No action.
Oh, no action is anticipated at our.
When we return.
When we return.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
This meeting is being called.
There we go.
Well, um, at this point in time, we are going to adjourn the meeting. It is eight forty-five. Thank you very much. Have a good night.